Good afternoon, everyone. I call to order the committee of the whole meeting, special call committee of the whole meeting for Wednesday, February 16th. It is after 4:00 p.m. I thank everyone who has joined us this afternoon. We have three speakers that would really like to share information not only with the council but with the public. And so we thank you for joining us if you're streaming in this afternoon. I would like to call for approval of the minutes. Hopefully you had an opportunity. We did send those out electronically and you've had an opportunity to read them. And this would be a motion to approve the minutes of the January 19th committee of the whole meeting. A move for approval?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Those minutes are approved. Our first speaker is Chief Executive Officer of the World Games, Mr. Nick Sellers, and he will be bringing us an update on the World Games. As Mrs. Abbott always says, "The world is coming to Birmingham and we're not that far out from it." So, thank you, Mr. Sellers.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, President Alexander, and thank you for the opportunity to present to all of you today. I've got two of my senior leaders on our team and my teammates with me today. Our Chief Operations Officer, Mr. Jay Caston, our Executive Vice President of Community Engagement, Ms. Kathy Boswell. They're here to not only help support our request today but to answer any questions that any members may have. Councilor Quinn, I've been thinking about you and your family and good to see you. Thank you for making time to be here with us today for this briefing. We do have just a couple of slides. I know we have, hopefully, most all of you have seen them, but if we might just pass them your way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for that. While that's moving around, I just, I guess, want to start with a little background to make sure we're all sort of level set. We've been on this road now since 2015 as a city. It predates many of us, perhaps even most of us, when Birmingham, Alabama, won the bid for World Games, then 2021 in January of 2015, beating out Russia and Lima, Peru. And just like every road is a little different, this road, this journey to where we are today has certainly had its moments. And all of it has started with that first step along the way. And little did we know at the beginning that now as we're moving toward all of these years of planning and execution, hopefully having Birmingham, Alabama, stand as a new showcase of where this city has come and where we're going, and the World Games 2022 to be that international stage to showcase it. We've taken a lot of steps on the road to Birmingham, and along the way, we knew all along that this would be roughly a $50 million endeavor. The additional year caused about $4 million roughly in incremental costs. We worked with our senior leadership team and all of our partners across this endeavor to find cost savings. And we've reduced that now down from roughly $57.5, $58 million back down to that mid $50 million budget that you see. From day one, we've tried to establish a roughly 70/30 split, 70% private sector, 30% public sector to execute on these games. And as I mentioned to many of you, and you'll see in this revenue summary briefing, it breaks down roughly about, I'm on the right side on the revenue walk forward, about $37.8, $38 million in the private sector and $17.8 million, roughly $18 million in the public sector for that 70/30 split. I'm very pleased, if there's any silver linings in this pandemic, one of them has been that we now have new venues to showcase while we're also showcasing venues that are an important part of our city. We'll have a new city walk, we'll have a new protective stadium, we'll also be showcasing Legion Field. Probably one of the most significant things along with the planning is it's allowed us to secure over 100 sponsors and VIP package ticket holders now for the World Games 2022. Over 70 of those are sponsors, the remaining 40-ish are ticket package holders. All in, over $24 million now in commitments to these games. We've got just under $3 million to go to hit that goal. We expect to sell close to $7 million in tickets and packages, excuse me, $7 million in tickets. We're well on our way there. Merchandise sales continues to pick up. To date, the public sector is in for a commitment of roughly $10 million, and that breaks down to $3.5 million from the city, $2.5 million from the county, $3.75 million from the state, and $550,000 from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. We come before you today to request the remaining dollars that we believe kind of apportions out among those different government bodies and public sector partners in the cash commitments as follows. $2.5 million from the county, $1.5 million from the state, another $500,000 from the city, and $3 million that we'll be requesting today from the city. I'm pleased to report that the Convention and Visitors Bureau has made their commitment of $0.5 million, that we've already received $100,000 of that. We are in the governor's supplemental budget at $1.5 million. We have support from the governor, from our legislative delegation leaders. We've met with the general fund chairs of both the House and the Senate. We have support there. And I have a reasonably high level of confidence that we'll receive another $1.5 investment from the state of Alabama in direct investment. The county commission, yesterday, a committee of the county commission approved $2.5 million that will go before the full county commission next week. We've met individually with each commissioner, we've had great conversations, have a high level of confidence that that will be approved there as well. But again, we're prepared to answer any questions the county commission may add. And that leads us to the city, Council President Alexander, and where we are today. We are respectfully requesting the final investment of $3 million from the city. That would put the city in at $6.5 million, the county in at $5 million, the state at $5.25 million, and the CBB at just over $1 million. If we are able to execute on this investment from our public sectors, and let me say, we recognize fully that there are so many investments and partnerships that this city is making to help us execute on these games that may not be a cash commitment, but helping us in many, many other ways, and we're grateful for the partnerships. If we're able to execute here, and we believe we'll execute on the private sector side, we think we can deliver something very special and historic for the city, for the state, for our country right now coming out of this pandemic. I wanted to leave it at that and see if there may be any questions you may have. Have it included our World of Opportunity or our WOO spend to date? That's our commitment we've made to our public sector partners, to ourselves, to the community as a whole, that we would try to increase capacity for local women and minority-owned businesses. Our available spend, as you'll see on page two, is about $13 million to date. We are well over 50% for local women and minority-owned businesses, but we are over 20% for minority and women-owned businesses. We have more work to do. I believe we are moving in the right direction there. That's over $3 million of investment in local women, in women and minority-owned businesses. And we continue to ensure that everything we do is run through that World of Opportunity Committee. I'll pause there now for any questions, comments, or direction from you and the council.
Well, thank you, Mr. Sellers. We do appreciate receiving this report and you sharing your revenue summary at this stage of the games and how you are preparing. I will open it up for councilors if you have questions that you would like to ask of Mr. Sellers regarding operations so far. Councilor Quinn.
Thank you, Ms. Sellers. One of the questions that I am being asked by my constituents, especially residents of the Smithfield area, so they live right around Legion Field, is actual employment opportunities relative to the World Games. So, you know, they know that the events are coming there and they're looking for, you know, opportunities, you know. I know there's a considerable community outreach effort and, you know, volunteer opportunities, but they're actually looking for some employment opportunities. Can you speak to that?
Yes, sir, I can, Councilor Quinn. I'd like for Kathy to help me on that. Kathy, can we talk some about what we're doing not only at the, at the World, not our World of Opportunity, but also our Reasons World Games Plaza and our vendor program, please? Thank you.
Absolutely. Councilor Quinn, that's a good question. So, it's good to see you all as always. So, let me give you the short of, that could be a very long story. One of the pieces of the commitment that we have for our vendors, and if it's okay, can I take this off? Thanks. One of the commitments that we asked all of our vendors to participate in, from our merchandisers to any of them that received a contract loss, was for employment opportunities. So, we created a commitment statement that said that they would participate with us in being able to host a job fair. Because what we don't know is, is the actual employees and the type of staffing that they actually need. So, we do have some staffing companies that we will be working with, like, for example, around transportation, possibly even on parking. But at the end of the day, we're banking on them to be able to be the ones that will host the job opportunities and be able to identify those through those vendors and then be able to communicate that with the community.
Okay. So, are you guys planning, I mean, or is there any initiative to, like, bring those employers together and have, like, a job fair, you know, in those communities where those events are going to be happening?
Yeah, I think what we have, we haven't gone down to that type of detail yet because one of the things that we have to do is to know exactly what the skill sets and opportunities are for the vendors, and that is not something that we actually have defined completely yet. But it would be something that I would think, I won't tell you we'd go to every community, we'd probably try and host it somewhere like the Crossplex or the Boutwell or at one particular entity, just because of capacity and resources. So, it would be more targeted at one particular place when we hosted that job fair. But that was always a part of the vision on recruiting people for various jobs.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Very good question.
Thank you very much. Any other councilors? Ms. Clark?
Hello, Nick. So, you know, I do have a, I guess I'm curious about the way the additional public sector contribution is broken out and why the CBB can't pick up more since this is bringing the world to Birmingham and, you know, that's kind of their purpose in life is to bring people to Birmingham. So, I would like to see them, you know, put more toward this gap. I think it would be good to hear from your standpoint more about the benefit to the taxpayers of Birmingham.
Thank you.
And I think beyond that, just, you know, what's the mayor's recommendation would be my question, and I guess that's the staff. So, benefit to taxpayers, well, and the other thing is, there's a value to all that other stuff we're doing, and I don't know if you all have assessed the value of in-kind, because I'm sure we're doing more than our cash contribution. So, benefit to taxpayers, value of our in-kind, why the CBB can't bear more of this public sector contribution, and then of the staff. I'd like to know what the mayor is thinking about this. Thank you.
Like, those last to first, if that's okay. The CBB, they are making other investments that are not going directly to us but are helping to support the overall execution of the games. As a representative example, we're working with the CBB right now on helping support the needs that we're going to have for a games time media operations support. We have 15 different venue clusters in and around the Birmingham area, as you know, and all of those will have to have media support. We'll bring in some volunteers in the community, but it's going to have to have a top-level, you know, if you go Olympic level or college football championships, Super Bowl level media operations support. They'll help us with that. They're also helping us in a variety of other ways, making investments in the games. It's a good question, Counselor. We have made these requests, they've walked arm-in-arm with us to date. What we have heard is that this is, you know, that this is what they can do as of this time. But Jay, are there other things you want to speak to with respect to the Convention and Visitors Bureau maybe and their ongoing support for us or tells the accreditation?
I mean, certainly, there's a very bit of benefit coming from the World Games to the lodging tax that obviously benefits the CBB. That exact number is hard to define at this point, but we are seeing quite, all of our blocks are filling up fairly quickly. So, we do, will it be a complete sellout? I don't know that, but we will, there will be compression, I would say, definitely from downtown moving outward because of how many people are moving blocks to see your rating. Also, has been, I guess, one benefit of that is that all the feds that will be coming here from a security standpoint will also be staying here.
Really good point. To the point of their investment, they're helping us on accreditation, a lot of their staff is kind of working almost in-kind, Councilor Clark, as part of our staff and being paid by the CBB to help support it. But your point is well-taken, and we certainly have made those requests. The second question with respect to economic impact, and I should have mentioned that earlier and to where Jay was leading, we expect over $0.5 million visitors still in a four- to six-hour drive time principally, but still some 20-plus thousand international fans that will be here over a 10-day period. That economic impact has been reviewed by the Convention and Visitors Bureau and the University of Alabama at well over $250 million for our community. It's significant. We have 17,000 hotel rooms in the greater Birmingham area approximately, and a good many of those, if not all, will be filled at some point during these games. We think as far east as Anniston, as far west as Tuscaloosa, but most of those will be right here in the Birmingham area. So, it is significant. Those are the objective, I guess, markers. There's so many subjective markers that I can't give you a value to right now of what this is going to mean to help, from an economic development standpoint, reimage our city as a new medical capital of the South where there's finally more things uniting us than dividing us on a global stage, and that will provide significant value for us in the future. Certainly rare that you can capture the world's attention for just a moment like that. I think the last question maybe was around the, was it around the mayor's support?
Yeah, it was to us.
The staff on that, but, you know, I appreciate you always, you know, telling us how this benefits our city and creates lasting value and impact.
Yes.
You know, it's a big, it's already a big gift and now it's another big investment. But I think, you know, your answer on the CBB to me really says they really should give more money because they're about to get a big boom in the lottery, in fact. So, anyway, just saying.
Understandable, and we are not going to be bashful to go back and ask for more support should we need it from the CBB, and I hear you loud and clear on it. The last thing I think you would ask was the value in-kind from the city. It is obviously significant from police support and many transportation, many of the other things that the city's doing. I don't have an estimated value to that directly at present, but I know it is very significant. And the only thing I would, of course, you know, I inherited this big old ship and I'm really proud to be a part of helping to get it to its port. I would tell you that historically, these World Games have been delivered in countries where the government has paid for the entire freight. Thankfully, we live in a democratic republic here where we encourage our private sector to step up to the table, and they have it a big, big way here. I think what you will find when you see these logos is that there is a conspicuousness by your absence. If you're a business in the Birmingham or in the state of Alabama, or perhaps even in the southeast now with a few other big names coming onboard, and you aren't associating your brand with this special moment.
Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And before I ask the administration to respond to Councilor Clark's question, I'd like to continue with the other councilors' questions. Mrs. Abbott?
Well, yes. Well, first of all, since, yeah, since I don't remember to turn my sound on, since I was probably the only council member who was here when we went after the World Games, and I remember all the commitments were made, and I remember Mr. Weldon saying he was going to raise the money, and of course, you know, things change and things just change. But I'm curious about all of the venues that are in other municipalities because they're reaping the benefits of the World Games, and like most things, it seems like the city of Birmingham and the downtown-located governments are footing the bill, but others get the benefits. It's like we fund the zoo, the botanical gardens, the, you know, museum of art. We fund it all. It's all on the backs of the city of Birmingham. So, what about these other municipalities that have events in them? What are they contributing to the grand scheme of life? And before you answer that, I have to say to my colleagues that I was opposed to that $3 fee for sports and entertainment when we did it, but now I see that it is possibly going to be the only thing that keeps our tushes out of the flames, considering all the other $3 million things that are coming up. So, but I would like to know what these other municipalities are pitching in, if anything.
That's more of a fair question, and I'll give you my best answer of where I believe we all are with that. Most of these venues, as you know, are in kind of the Birmingham metropolitan area. The ones that are not, as I recall, are the Hoover Met, Oak Mountain State Park. That's it. All of the other 15 venue clusters are in the city of Birmingham. For Oak Mountain, the state, not only with their direct investment in this, which will be over $5 million in cash, but their support, not only for the security with Homeland Security, and Oak Mountain State Park has been considerable, the investments that they're making in the otherwise the organizing committee would have to do to prepare the state park, and the signage that they're going to help us with. There are many other kind of preparations they're doing in and around. The lake where the water ski jumping and wakeboarding championships will be is significant. And then with the Hoover Met, that's where the women's softball championships will be. It's one of the marquee events, there's no doubt about it, for these games. They have not only paid to make all of the significant changes for the field to be from a traditional baseball field to a softball field, but they've in-kinded the facility to us and made significant investments along that as well. That cash, if we would have rented that facility and the cost to make those changes was in excess of $0.5 million probably? Is that a fair number? $2.50 to a half million? North of $4 million for that event that they have in-kinded for us. And there's significant investments that the city is making, not cash to the Birmingham Organizing Committee but in support of the games. So, the state really made, I would say, the biggest investment in this, Councilor Abbott, outside of really the city of Birmingham. The state would be second in terms of public sector support. Those two venues, the only two that are outside of the city.
Okay. Well, that's good, and we used to have more venues outside, and I think we pulled them inside.
That's correct.
Which is good.
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, I wish that the state was contributing more because I understand they're flush with cash and just looking for ways to spend it. So, who's a better, you know, recipient than the city of Birmingham bringing the World Games to town?
We're certainly trying, and we're making every pitch we can to receive as much support as we can get out of the state.
Well, I appreciate it, and I appreciate all that you've done personally because I know we had some stumbles and fumbles in the beginning of the World Games, and I was sitting there thinking, "I wonder if they're really going to make it." So, I'm glad that we're at this point. I wish we weren't meeting so you could ask us for more money, but, you know, you can't have everything. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Any other questions or? Council Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you and your team. Y'all have done an awesome job of inheriting a ship and then guiding it to port, as you said. On, just curious, kind of piggybacking a little bit on Ms. Abbott's question, has there been an ask of other municipalities to give?
Good question. Yes, our chairman, Jonathan Porter, is going around most all of the Jefferson County municipalities and asking for either ticket packages or other direct cash support, and I hope to have a report for you soon on that. To date, we have not received any, but we are making those requests.
As a sidebar, today I was at the Jefferson County Mayor's Association, and I was surprised to see the number of mayors wearing World Game pins, and so it is interesting that we're the only municipality that is given money. But anyway, it seems that if it's something that they're very proud of, that it is something that they would consider contributing to. In terms of CBB involvement, what was the original ask of the CBB board?
I recall, Counselor Williams, maybe it was a million, and we got a half million, and then we went back and asked again and received another half million from them.
Okay. And then, and then, okay, so you've got $550,000?
That was the initial, and that was on, if I recall correctly, on a $1 million request.
And that was, okay, and, okay, and so the response was $550 from a $1 million request?
Correct.
And then you've gone back to the board and requested another million, and the response has been half a million?
Well, I guess, in fairness this time, the CBB offered, they knew where we are. Mr. Oros is on our Board of Directors here, he knew our financial position and made an offer of a half million, and we graciously accepted the half million request. There was never any stipulation that we wouldn't say, "Can we receive some more support at some point in the future?" But we were happy to have the half million dollar request.
Okay. And then when do you need this funding by?
Well, we'd like to have it as quickly as we can because the major investments to carry us across the finish line really start in the May-June timeframe with most of these vendors and carry us through the World Games.
So, you have, the data that we have here where we have a $36 million number, and then there's a 20, there's a delta of 19 and change, is that $36 million cash on hand?
Good question. No, that's not cash on hand. Most of these sponsors, we've done multi-year commitments to be able to receive their sponsor commitments. So, we will continue to receive support well after these games from several of the larger million, million-and-a-half-dollar sponsors. We'll get those in there fiscal years, it could be this fall. I expect we will be in a solid cash position moving us into that May timeframe. That's when it's going to get tight for us. But again, we'll be able to pay all of our bills, we're working to finalize the line of credit. Our cash continues to come in, ticket sales will pick up. If you're asking me about preference, it would be to have it as soon as possible, but if that was not available from the city, we certainly would be okay if we, even if we took it from a cash flow standpoint closer to the games or even after the games.
When you talk about a line of credit, is that something you're going to take out regardless of the city's investment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
What does that look like from an interest rate structure?
The line of credit?
Yeah, is it something that's?
It's a $2 million request for a line of credit. It's really just if it's needed from a cash flow standpoint. We've worked with our vendors, with the IWGA, for a payment that was due at the end of the first quarter to move it to the second as cash flow picks up, and we think we're in good shape. So, it may not be needed, but we were going to have it as a matter of prudence.
So, I guess cash on hand is good with you guys until May?
Right. And again, the variable there is just ticket sales, but I still am confident that cash on hand should be solid for us. If I was asked, "When would you like to receive the funds from the city?", my response would be, "What it is, certainly as soon as we could." We would be able to manage even if those, the investment from the city, if this council made the decision to make this incremental investment, we could still manage all of our bills and pay through it even if that investment came mid-year or after.
All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Protem, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, hey, Nick, I just have one question. What will the $3 million go toward?
Well, really toward the overall investment of the games, Councilwoman. So, you know, we've got an operational budget that is 20-plus million. What's your overall operational budget? 25 million. And these funds, much like anything else, are sort of an amalgamation of different revenue streams, ticket sales, sponsorships, public sector support, merchandise, all of those come together. And I would suggest to you that, like any other operation, none of them are necessarily earmarked, they're all toward the execution of the games themselves.
I'm looking at Kathy because she probably already knows what I'm going to ask about. So, councilors, I actually asked a couple of months ago what we were going to do about the homeless population, right? Because I said we can't just take them to another municipality. So, Kathy has been very helpful in kind of getting a plan together. So, what are we going to do with the homeless? What's the plan?
Yeah, and Kathy, if you don't mind, please join me up here. It's a great question, and to your point, I think there have been instances, as we all know, of major events in other cities in this country and around the world. all know, of major events in other cities in this country and around the world where there's been different strategies to deal with the least of these and some of the challenging situations in their homeless population. While we can't solve that, we obviously have made a commitment to try to leverage this moment, to do well by doing good, and to do the best we can to bring partners to bear to the table. Recognizing that there's some 150 to 200 city centric of our neighbors who are dealing with this challenge every day, Kathy has pulled together some entities that perhaps may not have otherwise worked together in the past to try to at least establish a process going forward that perhaps could be good, because it offers an opportunity for our homeless population to maybe have a shelter and a place to stay, and while they are there, hopefully to get the services that they desperately need, most of them, if not all of them desperately need. I want Kathy to talk about it. She has sort of coined this, the compassionate neighbor, the compassion project. Again, we're not the hood ornament for this, as you know, Council Smitherman, but we want to play our part to try to help support it. And if that means in the end helping to support it from a cash standpoint, from the organizing committee, we certainly are willing to do that to help support the effort.
And so, Councilwoman Smith?
Your question, yeah. So we have already gone back, and so if, you know, if you all choose to agree to give us some of the funding, some of it will be used for that particular project. It is called the compassion project, and what has really happened is, is regardless of the World Games, CityWalk was going to automatically displace a large number of our homeless residents, regardless of what was going to happen. But the key is, is when you go back to the Olympics, 1996 Olympics, what they did do is they put people on buses and they sent people to various locations, and some of them probably did end up here. Well, the goal is, is that we didn't want to do that. And at the same time, the question is, we wanted to treat them with compassion. They're not a problem, they're in a situation that people need help. Some of them may be there because they want to, but that's not us to judge. But the question is, what can we do about it? Because we are going to be occupying and have people in traffic in many of the doorways where they're sleeping, and up under bridgeways and other things. So we pulled together some people to the table, and virtually what is happening is that we have a plan, Faith Chapel Care Center has agreed to be able to be open the entire 11 days of the World Games, to allow the homeless to turn their facility literally into a 24-hour facility for them. And at this particular care center, they do have showers, they do have there where they can do their laundry, and they will have a place to be inside based on the heat. We have, based on our sustainability program, what we call food harvesting or food rescue through BHM and some other entities, and so they will be able to take some of the food that we recover from the athlete villages and some other places in the concessions around Protective, and be able to take it there to feed those that would be housed there during this particular time. The other thing is, is that we do have services from UAB and other resources from Goodwill that are willing to come and do some programming with them while they are there. Now, the deal is, is this, is that this is a choice for people to do. We can't mandate, we can't move them there, but this is a choice that if they choose to stay on these premises. We did have, in the planning process, there was initial, this whole thought process around a tent city. People have a lot of problems with that, but at the end of the day, we had two choices, tent city or go to Mr. King's End. And nobody really knows his name, but that's what they call him, is Mr. King's End. We went there and actually talked to him to see if we could use that as the campus for our homeless population initially, but he has set residents that actually come all the time at the first of the month, so the days of the World Games are really the prime time of year for him. So what he did agree to was give us 40 rooms. Well, if you look at 40 rooms, based on the fee as well as on the taxes to that, it literally amounts to about $80 a night, and we were looking at 11 to 15 nights, which was roughly going to be for us, anywhere from 150 to about $184,000. Well, if that is what we had to do, we were taking that risk and had some people at the table that were literally going to be able to help us raise the money. Well, it ended up being the Alabama Institute of Architects came to us out of a fluke, is what I'm going to call a blessing. But they scheduled a meeting with us to be able to talk about something that they wanted to be able to display within the plaza for the World Games. What they wanted to display was, is an alternative sheltering for the homeless. They wanted to be able to put it on display to show the world, to show them about this particular shelter. People think tiny houses, but this is really like shelter. But it is a shelter that's built out of certain materials, about eight by eight, that would be able to be a facility where they could sleep versus a tent on the ground. So, long story short, the American Institute or Alabama Institute of Architects, they met with us, they met with Faith Chapel, Faith Chapel met with their directive operations, the operations met with the church, they agreed to accept, and they looked at it and thought this would be a great alternative. So the plan now is, is to literally build about 50 to 60 of these shelters, sleeping shelters, for individuals on the Faith Chapel Care Center campus. And this is where those who would like to have this alternative opportunity to become and stay during the World Games. That's the long, I know I said it was short long, but anyway, there wasn't a way around it. But that's pretty much short of where we are with that. But the good part is, this is what I need to convey, is that the 150,000 that would have literally gone to a hotel, literally washed itself out by doing the shelter. So that was the positive side. The good thing, the other point I want to make, and I'll stop, is that these shelters are able to be dismantled and put somewhere else. So to be honest with you, the goal of this project is, is to look for a sustainable opportunity of where this particular sheltering can be used even after the games. And I'm open for any questions.
Thank you, thank you so much for answering that. Is that your final question? And Dr. O'Quinn, I do know you had a follow-up, and then I'll?
Yes. So that's great to hear. I would encourage you to reach out to Aldot. They're going to be a very important partner in reaching our unsheltered community. So, you know, just putting that out there, that, you know, we have, on our part, been reaching out to them through the mayor's office and seeking their assistance in addressing this issue. And so you would be doing a great service to us by helping in that conversation as well. My other thing that I wanted to ask is, so the World Games is 10 days in July. But, you know, the real point of the World Games is to create something larger for the city of Birmingham, you know, a lasting impact. So this is a bit of a philosophical question, but I'd like to get your perspective on what is going to be the legacy of the World Games for the city of Birmingham?
Well, you just have few opportunities in life to kind of take advantage of a situation that can not only help the rest of the country and world build some more confidence in Birmingham and who we are and where we're going, but for us to build our own self-confidence in who we are and where we're going. You know, I used to liken Birmingham to that five-star athlete that's so good in practice, and they're just, you can't miss. And then when the lights come on, it's Friday night, they just kind of lock up, because they worry that they're going to make a mistake, or they worry that they're... And this is finally a time where they're, this city, that we're tapping into something that's larger than the World Games, in my view, and larger than anybody here in this room, whatever that is. I think that we're tapping into something that can really propel the city into bigger and better things. It's put all of you in the seats that you're in, because people believe that there are more that can bring us together than have separated us, which has been one of our biggest challenges in history. And I believe one of the legacy, one of the biggest enduring legacies, Councilman, of these games, is helping us rethink about how we treat each other and how we work together as a region, you know, to get things done. There will be beautiful legacy gifts and monuments, there will be other things that we will have leave behind, like our World of Opportunity Committee. I think the biggest thing is, we're going to do something that is going to be really big and positive and historic, God willing, and I believe we will. And I think on the back end of it, it's going to open up bigger opportunities for our city, but it certainly is going to create new ways of working together to get things done. And if we do nothing else than that, it's been a monumental achievement for this.
Thank you. Councilmore?
Yeah, I'm glad that Council O'Quinn asked a question about legacy. I know I've had an opportunity to work with several young people who, you know, may have never ever left their neighborhoods. And this event creates the unique opportunity to give them exposure beyond, you know, their wildest dreams, because literally the world is coming to Birmingham. And so I wanted to just ask, what opportunities are there for young people to be, you know, exposed and engaged during this time?
Good, Councilmore, I think, if I may, I want to bring Kathy back up here, because this is?
It seems like Ms. Kathy needs to just stay up here with you.
Because she leads our community engagement, you know, we all have our strengths in life, and?
Absolutely.
Her strength is that she holds us all accountable for making sure that we kind of always appeal to our better angel on things and make sure everybody is at the table. Because, you know, it's easy when you get shaped by a different experience to not think about those things. But she helps us ensure we bring our authentic selves, and I think that's why everybody in this community is going to be involved in some way, or at least be invited to be involved, and I want you to talk about that.
Okay, so, yeah, so the young people have always been at the core. So let me tell you, I'm going to go in a hierarchy of three things of what's happening. One of the particular things that's very powerful and was very intentional, and I have to give the sponsor credit for this, we had two sponsors that particularly catered to kids. One was, one of the first ones was Medical Properties Trust. I don't know if you all know this or not, but kids 12 and under get in free with a paying adult. That's a part of the ticket, that's a part, and it's out there on the ticket site, but if they are coming in with an adult, if they're 12 and under, they actually get in free, and that's like, you know, one child per adult purchasing a ticket. But Medical Properties Trust was the first one that said, we want to make sure that kids get a chance to come. But the second big thing is, is what Spire did. Spire sponsorship is what they call 10,000 Reasons Why. And I'm having calls with them now, but what Spire is going to do is actually be able to probably do some kind of initiative to really begin to get tickets to groups for them to be able to bring young people. We specifically talked about the neighborhood associations and the kids in the neighborhoods. We're having to work that out, because what we're trying to do, as in the conversation with them, is we need to make this fair. So the key is, everything can't fit in one process. You have to look at things, and based on where people and how they get access to different things. So we are working on a process that will be something that's shaped for the neighborhoods, as well as other tracks of individuals, as well as nonprofit organizations that may have individuals with special needs, et cetera, to be able to ensure they can get some of those tickets as well. The third thing that I'll end by saying is, we have two programs and opportunities. One was the poster contest that we did through ninth through 12th graders. We got 107 submissions from young people around digital, mixed media, painted. We got some talented kids floating up and around in these art departments. But those submitted, those particular posters, we're going to be judging those, the winners will win cash, swag, as well as tickets. And they also will have an opportunity to be contributors to, because the monies raised from these posters that are sold will actually go to the Birmingham Promise. So that's one. And then the last thing, I said the last one, but anyway, only one more. But the other one is, is around the talent contest that we're doing to recruit talent for the plaza area during the games. Can you come back now?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, and the youth choir, we did a recruitment for the youth choir, 120 kids to be a part of the opening ceremonies, youth choir, and the closing ceremonies. And then during the month of April and May, we have a program called YES. It's the youth encouragement strategy that is all around youth entrepreneurs. And students that are in the 10th through the 12th grade will be able to apply to be a part of this leadership program, where they're going to learn about leadership, they'll be taking Strength Finder, they'll also be doing a few other things. But the key is, is that they will be able to market their products, because we have a lot of them are small business, like kids that make ties, necklaces, bracelets, and do crafts and different things, but they will be able to have a day where they will be able to sell their goods and items in the market that will be located at the plaza. And I'll get all of you all information about that. You come.
Thank you very much, and thank you for that question, Counselor, because I know people have reached out to my office and just asked about the youth engagement as part of the community engagement process, and also a lot of people have been wondering about, I have a talent, or I have some type of skill where it's musical or art-driven, and so I'm assuming they would go on to the World Games site, and then you have a page on there for that type thing?
We do.
Okay. Thank you very much, thank you. We do appreciate your bringing this to us, and now, I guess the big question is, we want to, Counselor Tate, did you have any comments? Just, sorry, thank you.
As I sit here and listen to, you know, everything everybody's saying, Nick, I just want to thank you and Jay and Kathy for your commitment. And then I'm going to piggyback on what Dr. O'Quinn said, like, what is the legacy in this? And when we look back, like where Birmingham is known for, where it has come to today, you know, we standing on the shoulders of people like Dr. King and all the people that paved the way. And so, you know, we often hear the world is watching, so the world is really watching something great. So I'm reminded when Dr. King, you know, said that, you know, one day that he would see all people come together, so you got all type of nationalities coming together, so this is huge, and thank you all so much.
You know, Counselor Tate, just real quickly to add on that, our Road to Birmingham campaign starts February the 23rd, next week. Beijing Olympics closing ceremonies, as you know, is this weekend. And then the eyes of the international sports world literally turned our great city for World Games 2022. And in that road to Birmingham, there's going to be incredible storylines. From the truck-driving champ of Idaho, Trent Sabo, a sumo wrestler, 420-pound lightweight sumo wrestler, who has won silver medal twice, but is attempting his last feat to beat the great champions from Japan and Ukraine and win the gold medal here in his home country. He's everyday All-American, okay? To the US Women's Softball Team that has eight Olympians, seven SEC ladies, two All-Americans from Alabama, the first Native Alabamian in history, Haley McClenni, who was a star of the Tokyo Games from Morton-McJordan High School, just up the road, who will help their team hopefully avenge their gold medal loss to Japan and win gold here in their home country. To the Iroquois Nation, an incredible story of our Native American tribe from the Northeast that weren't going to be allowed to compete in these games because they're not recognized as a sovereign nation under the rules of International Olympic Committee. But this organizing committee worked with the US Olympic Committee, the Canadian Olympic Committee, and the world lacrosse to make a petition to allow them to compete. They were approved, but there were already eight teams seated. And in an unbelievable display of sportsmanship, the men's Irish lacrosse team voluntarily withdraws, so that the Iroquois Nation could take their rightful place among the top eight teams. We will celebrate what that means, because nothing brings the world together like sports. And I would submit to you in this moment, when our campaign starts, it's called Step Up, and it's a double entendre. It's not just, let's step up as a community, let's step up as a state and a world for this moment, but watching these athletes go through their struggles, their setbacks, their failures, to ultimately keep moving, to have their moment to step up on that medal stand. In many ways, that's what this is for our city. This is our moment to step up, our medal moment as well with these athletes. We are inextricably connected to them for the World Games. I think it will create that forward motion for us for other big things in the future.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Tate. Counselor Clark?
Okay, I'm not going to beat this to death, Nick, but, you know, I'm trying to figure out who else can help us pay some of this money. I was just wondering, is the airport involved at all in the planning? And they are federally funded, so?
Yes.
Do they, do they get ARPA money?
Don't know if they got ARPA money, Counselor Clark, but Ron Matthew is on our board, he's been a very active member on our Board of Directors for the organizing committee. Recently reported they're making an $8 million new investment, eight-plus million dollar new investment to prepare, that's our first and last, you know, impression for the world, as you know, is that airport, to prepare the airport for it. They're working to put up signage and gobo lighting and all sorts of things, World Games lighting inside and outside the airport, as we start to welcome our guests from around the world. So candidly, I can't say enough good things about what that airport is doing to be a partner for us.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Again, we thank you. Chief, could you answer, we have the question on the table from Ms. Clark, and I think we're all sitting here as councilors, want to know response from administration and what you would be bringing forward for us to consider?
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, councilors, Nick, everyone. So my answer will be a little bit more succinct. A recommendation will be coming forth from the mayor. So Chaz Mitchell and Kevin Moore both serve as our incident commander and deputy incident commander for the World Games, but they're also our chief of operations and our finance CEO. So weighing the request from the World Games up against our, obviously our continuing needs of the city, we know time is of the essence, Nick, and so the mayor is going to be coming back to you with a recommendation. But it's to do, as you said, Counselor Clark, it is to see what other options we have available to assist with possibly support, while making sure that we have a successful games and that there's a sure that we have a successful games and that as a city, we do our part. So look forward to a recommendation from the mayor soon.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for administration or, is that your, helps you help us go which way we need to go? All right. Thank you. Well, again, Mr. Sellers, we do appreciate you bringing us this update, this summary, and giving us this full information of where we're headed. And we all, I know, are full of support of wanting to be sure that Birmingham, the World Games do provide us with that legacy. And we have a great opportunity to show people what Birmingham, where we've been and where we're going. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Alexander. Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you all. Counselors, please turn your attention to our agenda. The next item is an update from Birmingham Jefferson BJCTA. We have our executive director, CEO, Ms. Charlotte Shaw.
Good evening, Madam President and Counselors, and sir, good to see you. So I come to you into my new capacity, I guess, than when the first time we met, when I was the BRT Deputy Director. So it's interesting how quickly things can change around here, isn't it? But I have so much to share with you, so many exciting things that we're doing at BJCTA. I made quite a few changes, did some reorging, and set some initiatives with the infrastructure money coming. But today's purpose is to talk with you about the request for disbursement that we need of the $6 million that was recently approved by the city council. And so we do have something planned for you and the rest of so many of the other municipalities, the elected officials, and a transit roadshow workshop that we're doing over at BJCTA to share with you all our new initiatives and how we anticipate the infrastructure dollars to work and impact our budget in a positive way. But today, I just wanted to kind of go over what we need to include in our current budget to ensure that we can balance our budget and meet our budget. And so with me today, I have my CFO, Glenn Dickerson, and I have Stephanie, who also worked for the city in the grass capacity, but I took her with me to BJCTA, and she is now our Chief of Monitoring and Evaluation Officer, which is one of the positions I added, just to keep us honest, to make sure that we're doing everything with the utmost ethics, and ensuring that we do all our internal audits, and we follow all the FTA requirements. And also, I have in the back room with us, who showed up for me, was our two ops managers, one which I just hired as part of my reorg, and Stan, wave your hand for the counselors, who I just hired from MARTA in Atlanta. So we are increasing our experience and our skill set so that we can ensure that we offer the best services. But just in line with the budget, we think there were $6 million approved. And Glenn is going to go over, so if you look at the first slide that I've given you on the transit charges, payments, and balances due, there was a $2 million outstanding that during the COVID, I understand from the previous administration, we were going to try to figure out how to come up with that particular amount with the city. But that was during a really rough time for both the city and BJCTA. And so we're looking at trying to do some creative financing to figure out how we're going to come up with that outstanding $2 million, which we may have to take out of some of the either CARES Act money or the ARPA money that we received. And Stephanie will kind of identify and go through that with you. Because one of the things I want to make sure that we do, we are very transparent, that you know exactly how much money we have, you know exactly how we're going to be spending our budget. And so we want to ensure, as part of the workshop too, because I can't go into a lot of that detail here, because it's going to take a little bit more time. And so just know that we have that plan for you to take you through the total budget, so to ensure that you know exactly how all that incoming infrastructure money is going to impact the budget, and how what we've already received already impacts our current budget. So our outstanding fee that we're requesting is the $6,012,0776. Or is that 776? And so now I will ask Glenn to come up and go through the next slide with you, and then we'll have Stephanie go through the grant slide, and I'll come back and close us out.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I invite you to turn to the next page. Anyway, we're going to skip around, turn to the third slide, the slide that looks like this. Let me cover this first, because this encapsulates how we build our budget and how we come up with the amount that we're going to charge each municipality. So the first thing we do when we're building the budget is we meet with each city to try to determine the level of transit services that the city is requesting. So what we provide to the cities is based on what they ask us to provide in terms of service. And upon meeting with each city, we've determined, if you look at the left side here, that operating expenses is going to cost about $37.5 billion. So you see that. And this is based on us paying drivers, paying labor benefits, vehicle maintenance, fuel, et cetera. You can see the list of items there. But in addition to that, we also have to have capital expenditures. So we've estimated and budgeted for the fiscal year that we're currently in, that we'll spend about $7.2 million in capital expenditures, which brings our total need that we have for this fiscal year to around $45 million. So you can see that, $45 million. So the question then is, where does this money come from? So if you look at the other side of the ledger, you see that $1.3 million we expect to come from passenger fares. This is a little lower than we normally have because we're still in the COVID recovery process. We would normally get about $2 million, but because of that, we're expecting about $1.3 million. We get about $7.9 million in abhorrent taxes from both Jefferson County and the City of Birmingham. We get $2 million from beer tax, and another $2 million from the Jefferson County tax. This Jefferson County tax was a tax when they had some, I think, some warrants for school taxes. Those warrants were actually retired. The money is still coming to Jefferson County, but out of that, we get $2 million each year. Then you see a small amount of there for $400,000 for commissions, rents, advertising. We rent space to Greyhound. We rent space also to Megabus, and also to Greyhound. Then next, you see federal grants. We're expecting to get $8.6 million in federal grants, $2.8 for operating assistance, and then $5.8 for capital assistance. This $5.8 is a, to help to fund the $7.2 million you see up there for capital. So out of that, the government is paying $5.8 million. And then above that, you see a bar of $9.1 million for federal funding, $7.1 in CARES Act, another $1 million in Carista funds, and another $1 million in ARP funds. So that makes up the $9.1 million. But then what you see here is there's still a gap between the $45 million that we need and about the $32 million that we've identified so far where those funds are coming from. So that's what the cities have to come up with. The enabling legislation that governs and tells us how to do this actually says, once you identify all the sources of funds that meet your needs, then the cities have to pay the difference. And the cities pay the difference based on the hours that we spend in that particular municipality. So we spend about 83% of the time that we are running routes in the City of Birmingham. So therefore, the City of Birmingham bill was about $11 million for this fiscal year. So let's go back to the previous slide that Director Shaw just went over. If you look there at the bottom of the page, you see $11 million there for the City of Birmingham. Now, the city has already paid us $5 million, but the deficit now stands at $6 million that we still need from the city. So we're asking for the city to actually fund that. I think you've already approved it, but we just need those funds now to actually complete out this fiscal year. The second slide, the next page, actually shows how much we've gotten from the City of Birmingham over the years from 2017 to 2022. And it shows that we got about $10.8 million in 2017, about $10.6 in 2018. In 19, 20, and 21, it was $10 million. Of course, in 21, we actually gave back the city $3 million in CARES Act funding. So you only, part to pay $7 million, but we only got five of the seven. And in '22, we're requesting $11 million. So $11 million, less the five that you've already paid, leaves six that's really needed.
Thank you, Counselors. Do you have any questions? Everyone's trying to digest this. Mr. Counselor Williams?
You don't know if I have questions or not?
I do.
All right. All right. So on page two of this, not the cover page, but the page that has the year, it's, is that, those aren't fiscal years, those are calendar years, correct?
Right.
They are fiscal years?
Right.
Okay. So when you talk about the enabling legislation, how is it that we have paid 2019, 2020, and 2021, we've budgeted $10 million if we are supposed to be paying the 80-something and change percent of what y'all cannot make up?
The good man, this guy.
Well, let's talk about this. So if we've been budgeting for the past several years $10 million, and there's legislation that says that we are supposed to be paying, what'd you say, 80-something percent of ridership?
Right, of the deficit.
Of the deficit. And so how was that, how have we, I guess, how has that not happened the past several years, I guess is my question, then, if we've been budgeting a flat 10 for the past several years?
Well.
The rate has changed, I know that much. So the rate that BJCTA was higher in 2017 and 2018.
Okay.
And it was adjusted down when Director Martin came on board. So that's one thing that has happened.
Okay. So there's been a rate change, then. So when you say that you meet with the city to determine what routes, do we have, who are you meeting with at the city?
Well.
The other participating municipality. Else we're meeting with, you mean, who we meet with in the city?
I think he means who at the City of Birmingham.
Birmingham, we meet with Chaz and.
For the routes?
Because I've never been in any meeting.
Questions for the routes?
Let me, let me share how the routes work. And so, and this is, this could be a lengthy discussion, but I'm going to try to shorten it down, because it's not real easy to talk about routes, right? So before I came aboard, they had cut some routes. And then we did a COA, which we bring in consultants to do a comprehensive analysis. And what they do is look at the demographics, they look at our current routes, and they compare what we're able to afford with our services. And so if we have less money than we have, and we have more services, then we have to cut the services. So right now, what we're doing, I'm taking the current comprehensive analysis, and that's why I put a halt to it when I got there, because I wanted to make sure there was something that I could agree with, and that I, that I studied and make sure that it was going to fit the services for what we were able to pay. And so what we do is, those consultants come in, and they look at all of these different aspects of the transit industry and what we're doing here in the City of Birmingham. And so they narrow it down to based on what municipalities pay. And the subscription services, think of it that way. You get what you pay for. And so if you pay a certain amount, you get so many routes. Right now, we have 20 routes for the City of Birmingham. So all, just about every bus touches somewhere in the City of Birmingham in the Central Station. So now what we're looking to do is, and this is why, one of the reasons we want to have the workshop, is to show you how this works. And one of the ways we're going to do that, there's a game that people play in the industry, and it's an actual game to help people make decisions around routes, because it's not an easy decision to make. And transit is a really complex subject, but people really simplify it, right? And that's what makes it very difficult, because there are a lot of decisions that have to go into those routes. So basically, in response to your question, we work with very qualified consultants, who that's all they do is comprehensive analysis. We meet with the city. We also developing a new Riders Council that will include elected officials, that will include people who ride the service. It includes community advocates, and it's going to include community engagements, so that they can see how we have to determine what we do around these routes. And so right now, you're working with a 20-bus route, right? And of course, we have some issues around our headway, which is our frequency, which we're working on again, we're working on that as well. But to do that, we have to sit down over these comprehensive analyses to come up with the best system for the City of Birmingham based on our budget.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, does that, so does the, does the study show ridership data?
As a what?
Show ridership.
Do we show ridership data?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. We collect that data on the buses.
Is that something that they provide to you?
Yes. So BJCTA, as a stipulation in the contract with the City of Birmingham, provides monthly reports on ridership, on-time performance, paratransit services. I know I've been receiving them from Danar Gilbert, and I assume that that goes to all of us.
I thought I receive them as well, and I believe they've been distributed to all the counselors. Of course, we could go back and look at that. But I do know that does come in on a regular basis. And I believe we receive a hard copy as well as an electronic.
And we're probably going to be making some changes to that data and how the way it's submitted in the future. I don't necessarily like the way it's presented.
Is this the same thing as the scorecard?
It's a scorecard, right?
Yes.
We submit it every month.
Okay. So the scorecard, let me see if I can pull one up, is, I think, some of the craziest emails I've gotten since I've gotten on the council, because it's someone giving themselves a grade. It's the equivalent of, you know, a parent asking their child for a report card, and then the child says, no, let me tell you what I think I deserve in this class.
That's your opinion of the data that's being distributed to us. And I would like to allow the representatives, they've told us they would give us a workshop, and these type of questions, we could submit, and so that we could get more detail as we go through and what we want to see, the information we really want to have shared. So I would like to give them the opportunity that we, I know what you're, you want to go through each one of those items, but I know, I want to give them a sense or an opportunity that they can understand among us as counselors what other information we feel we need to see. And so I'd like to give them that opportunity, and we could do that during the workshop.
Oh, that's fine. So they're not asking for this funding now?
They're asking for the disbursement of the money that we have already approved, is my understanding.
That's right.
What they're asking us for today. We've already approved this money.
Prior or post the workshop?
This is within the workshop. You had a workshop planned for us.
We have a workshop planned that's coming up in March, so that we can share with you how all of this works. Because I think one of the things that's been missing for the transit system is that we have not educated our elected officials or our public well on how it really works and how it operates. And so I want to help you understand the scorecard, because it can be difficult to understand for a person who's not in the industry. And really, the scorecard is made up of industry data. And so most agencies review that scorecard, and that's what they use for industry data. But I want to help you understand that at a future date.
Well, then let me say this. This is the scorecard I get from my constituents. In the districts that I, the district that I represent, it seems that a lot of the routes have been cut. Granted, most of it was before you were there. Granted, most of it was before you were there, and that accessibility to transportation is, is not, public transportation is not available. So when I get a scorecard of all As and a B-, and I know that I have consistent concerns from my residents throughout the entire eastern and southern side of the city of Birmingham, it makes me question the scorecard. But anyway, so that's my, you know, this is, this is more of speaking on behalf of the consistent concerns that I get in neighborhood meetings and with my residents. You know, VIA never was expanded to the eastern side of Birmingham. Bus rapid transit stops before it gets to the eastern side of Birmingham. The bus system doesn't do a good job in my district on the eastern side of Birmingham. So I have concerns over what's going on. That's why I want to know if there's data that's being shared other than the scorecard, which I get, there's a lot of As on the scorecard, but my district doesn't feel that we, that we're on the honor roll. And that's my point.
I just want to make a statement, though, Counselor, with all due respect, I wish there were As on that scorecard. That's one of the things I don't like about it, because it does not show us in a very favorable manner, because they're not all As on the scorecard. Actually, it's not even graded by As. It's graded by industry data based on ratios. And so right now, if you look at the ridership, our own performance is more like 76%, which is, we like to see it better, but we have some serious industry problems. The industry is down 80,000 drivers in the transportation industry, 80,000 drivers. So we're competing in that workforce. The mechanics are even worse than that. And so what we're having to do is fight against a situation that we all are experiencing in the entire industry. So when you look at the scorecard, it really does show what our true picture is. I'd just like to see us be able to approve that. And we have to decide as a city how we really want to see public transportation. And what does it mean when the spectators for the World Games come in and we can't run past the frequencies because we have a limited budget? And so what I'd like to see us do is come together, and you come over to BJCTA, to the workshop, where we can actually show you what all of these industries' standards and ratios actually mean. But in the meantime, I need to be able to balance my budget with this $6 million difference to be able to make the commitments to the current routes that I have.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, my question's probably a really easy one. You have a $45 million annual budget, or close to it. You bring in $1.3 million in fares and .4 million in commissions, rents, and advertising. Is there any other income of any sort that y'all get that's not taxpayer dollars?
Commissions, advertisement, rents.
Compressed natural gas.
Yep.
You get money for, they get paid for compressed natural gas?
Paid for, excuse me?
Compressed natural gas?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We have a, we're only one of the few locations that have compressed natural gas, so we allow customers to come over and use or pay for that service. That is a income revenue for us.
Wow, I had no idea.
Yes, ma'am.
But that's part of the commission's rents and advertising, or is that in another category?
Yeah, that's part of it.
That's part of it. Okay. That's my only question.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. Ms. Clark?
Hi, just, thank you, Madam President. Hello, just quickly, you're in, you're in, almost halfway into your fiscal year, right? Because you're on a federal fiscal year?
Just started.
You just started? What, what's your fiscal year?
October 1.
October 1.
Right.
But that's four months, five months in. So almost half. You're almost halfway, but you don't have the revenue to fully fund the whole operating year? Or is this for the next?
Well, no, this is for our current fiscal year.
Okay.
And so we need that $6 million to balance this budget for this fiscal year.
For the year you are almost 50% through.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's what I thought.
And then we'll come to you.
Right. So we gotta budget.
Exactly.
So we've got to be budgeting for, so do you expect the city contribution to be on par, like about 11-something for next year?
Yes, ma'am.
Or is it going to be higher?
Yes, ma'am. We got the BRT coming onboard.
Okay.
There's going to be additional operating fees just for the BRT, and so that's going to increase the budget somewhat.
Okay. So now, I guess my question operationally, we approved the money, and it's, it's sitting in the coffers, because...
That's right. That's right, Counselor Clark.
So I guess, what's the issue?
So this presentation was for the council for the release of those funds.
Okay.
That's, that's the purpose of there being here, and the staff is working with the BJCTA on the 2023 allocation. So those are separate, but for the approved funds, the ARPA funds, that's what this discussion is for.
Okay. So you all, so is that a funding agreement that comes on the council agenda or something?
So the funds are already in place. So once the council approves it, then our operations team and finance team will move with making sure that they get it.
Okay.
So got Chief Mitchell on the phone, brought him back on the line as well, if you want to talk about the, making sure that they get the funds. He's also on VIA WebEx. But that's what this presentation is for, is for the release of those funds to make sure you all don't have any questions.
So we will actually vote today on that?
So it's the council's pleasure to advance it, but again, it's to make sure your questions are answered.
Oh, I see. We would advance it.
Right.
I can respond to that if anybody can hear me.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Mitchell.
Okay. So, well, good afternoon, everybody. I'm sorry I couldn't be there with you. Just to give everybody an update, so the council did approve $6 million of ARPA funding for the BJCTA. If you recall, and of course, the Counselor Clark, Counselor Tate, and Counselor Moore were not part of that discussion when we first did the first allotment of $5 million to the BJCTA. That was a negotiation that we had with them to make sure during, especially a pandemic, and this was before Ms. Shaw, so let me, let me preface that, that we worked out a deal with them to try and shore up and make them whole for this current fiscal year. As y'all already noted, that those fiscal years are not aligned with our fiscal year, so we're actually trying to play catch-up. And as noted, we're, we are working with the BJCTA along with BDOT to, you know, talk about the route optimization and other things that are potentially new requests from the BJCTA for the fiscal year 2023. So we want to make sure that, I don't want to say that we're committing X amount of money for the next fiscal year once we present that budget to the council, but we are negotiating with, negotiation with them to make sure that they're, one, making sure they're using the funding from us, because we're the largest contributor to the system, and two, just to make sure that everything's efficient and effective for the citizens of Birmingham. And so really, like Chief Sparks has already noted, the, the presentation before you now is really just a mechanism to give you guys an update in order to release the $6 million, where we will come before this council again with an amendment to the agreement that was already approved that ended on December 31st, 2021.
Thank you, Chief Mitchell. Any other questions or comments? All right. Ms. Shaw, we thank you all. We thank you, Mr. Dickerson, for bringing us this information. As has been stated, we won't have any council action on that today, but we appreciate you bringing it to us beforehand so that we can understand how this disbursement works and how that aligns with your fiscal budget and those type things. I look forward to the workshop, and I hope that you will take into consideration some of the information that's been shared about the scorecard and different things we could do. So I look forward to the workshop and what we do.
Thank you so much.
And we are thankful to have you over there. We miss you over here, so thank you. Thank you very much. All right, councilors, next we will have our last agenda item is an update from the Small Business Administration, the Presidential Disaster Declaration for Jefferson County. So we have Public Affairs Specialist Ms. Ann Williams, and we thank you, Ms. Williams, for joining us. You are giving us some information today that doesn't include any type of an As. It's what you can give us to the residents of our city, so we thank you.
That's right. Thank you, Council President Alexander and all of the Birmingham City Councilors. I'm going to try to be brief. I believe some of you have heard this information before. I like to remind everyone that if you know the information, there may be many people, especially your constituents, who do not. In particular, I'd like to talk about the second slide, which is the mission statement. I'm not sure if that's happening, but you have a packet in front of you, I believe. So most people know the SBAs are there to support small businesses with counseling and financing, but during times of disaster, the SBA is also there to help with low-interest loans for homeowners, renters, and nonprofits and businesses. On our second page, we see the types of disaster declarations. I don't need to tell you, but December 21st was the presidential disaster for individual assistance for Jefferson and Shelby counties because of the floods in 2021. And there is a sense of urgency today, because we're coming up on a deadline of February 21st for people who were impacted, who had physical property or personal property damage. So those applications need to be submitted on or before the 21st. I want to also impress upon people the fact that when there is a presidential declaration, the SBA's disaster loan program is automatically activated. And again, we have to continually state that it's not just for businesses. This declaration also includes what we call economic injury disaster loans, which many people know from COVID. We call them idle loans. If you're a business or nonprofit that applied and received an idle loan for COVID support, you are also eligible to apply for an idle loan for this, this disaster that occurred in October. The role of the SBA is to help people recover from a disaster, and in particular, recover their uninsured or underinsured needs. At this time, when a disaster has happened in anywhere in our country, we find that the SBA is providing more disaster loans to homeowners than any of the other groups. So I can't tell you how many people I've talked to who don't realize that that's something that they can apply for. I would like to just take a minute and give you an example of how you might describe this to someone. If there's a person you know who had flood damage to a car and took out a personal loan or put money on a credit card to pay for their information, their payments to fix their car, or for things that weren't covered by insurance, those interest rates are very high. And the SBA disaster loans for homeowners and people who are renters is as low as 1.563%. And those are really low interest rates for people to know. We're also, right now, in this declaration, helping businesses and nonprofits in adjacent counties to Jefferson and Shelby. So those counties are Bibb, Blonde, Chilton, Cusa, St. Clair, Talladega, Tuscaloosa, and Walker. And again, those are businesses and nonprofits who can apply for those loans. I mentioned the homeowner and renter interest rates for businesses. The interest rates for up to a 30-year term loan are, is 2.855, and for nonprofits, it's 2%. There's no obligation for people to take the loan. If they should decide that they don't want the loan, they're not penalized, and they have up to 60 days to agree to accept the loan. But what happens if you're not approved? And this is, this is really critical. If someone has experienced damage due to the disaster, they need to register with FEMA. That's the step one. Step two is apply with the, to the SBA. If your loan is not approved, you are eligible then to go back to FEMA. SBA refers you back, so that you might be eligible for additional resources through FEMA. And we know those are not paid back, those are grants. That's the process. So even if someone says, I know I'm not going to really qualify, my credit's not as great as I'd like it to be, we encourage them to apply, because they will be reassessed and might be eligible for additional funds. I've covered most of what I wanted to say. I just want to give you some information about how people can reply, since the date's coming up. We do have a recovery center in Hoover. It is closing unfortunately tomorrow because of the president, president's holiday on Monday. However, people can still apply by calling 1-800-659-2599, and that is a number that's staffed seven days a week. We also have a website, which is disasterloanassistance.sba.gov. And we also have FEMA's information if people need to register with FEMA, that's disasterassistance.gov. So I would like to thank you for your time. I'm grateful to share this information, and if anyone has any questions, I'd love to take them from you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I know we all are very happy to see and have you come to personally share this information. Mayor Woodfin did mention this, I know it's been running on the city government websites, but I know most of us had residents that were affected in the October 6th and 7th storms and floods. So I hope, I'm hoping and really encouraging them to take heed to this information, and we'll be continuing to pass it along as councilors. Councilors, do you have any questions, Ms. Williams? All right. Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Williams. Again, we thank you. We'll take all this information, and we'll be sure to share that in our, our districts. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great day, everyone. Thank you.
All right, councilors, at this time, we have no old business and new business. Can I call for a motion for adjournment?
Sure, ma'am.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Hey, Carol, can you afford me to, um, yeah? How many, how many?